Hello and welcome, I am Andhra and you are watching India Today's So South. Ever since Prime Minister Narendra Modi's government called for a special session of parliament, the rumor mills have been working overtime. What is he up to? Is he going to just move to the new parliament building? Or just discuss a few pending bills? Or is he going to bring in the one nation, one poll bill? With the special session less than two days away, the most asked question is, is he going to log Saba polls? Modi loves to keep all his cuts close to his chest. There are hints in his public life that can help us figure out what he might do and what he might not. Today, our editor, Mr. B V Rao, has made a list of seven reasons why he thinks Modi will call early elections and five reasons. First, list out the reasons why. So, reasons for early polls are special session, one nation, one poll committee, one plus two equals three, puncture India, positive mood, fear of food inflation, BJP's Modi Bhramastha. And here is a list of reasons why he won't call early elections. Risky and tedious, COVID committee, a five-year ritual, once bitten, innocuous agenda. So now, let me invite Mr. B V Rao to explain these reasons in detail. Hello Venkatesh sir.
Hi, Andhra.
Alright, so let's go through the list one item at a time. So, the first special session, what does it tell us?
Yeah, I think that's in the name, special session, right? So, everybody is expecting something very big, very special. So, the first thing that comes to everybody's mind when we are talking something special is that, is it going to be early elections? Because it is that time of the year, right? We are just a few months away from the election. So, the obvious rumor, obvious deduction is that Modi is planning something very big in, in terms of earlier, early elections, right? That's, that's why I think, the moment he called the special session, everybody started talking about early elections.
Right. Alright, sir. So, your second reason is ONOP, which is one nation, one poll election.
Yeah. So, I think, I think this is just a red herring. What one nation poll, soon after the special session was announced, came up with the announcement, one nation, one poll committee under former president, Kovind. This basically, I think, was intended to actually fuel the rumors about an early election. But I doubt whether that, yeah, like I said, I think it is just the fact that he announced a special session and then simultaneously called a former president to give suggestions on one election, one, one nation, one election. Everybody has kind of put two and two and in, in many ways, two and two can be twenty-two, right? So, I, that's where we are. That's why the one nation, one poll announcement has happened.
Okay. So, your third reason, one plus two equals three. So, what do you mean?
Yeah, as I said, it was already said, one plus two is three and special session. Then read it, read that together with the committee formed by the, under Kovind's leadership. Then you tend to immediately think that, okay, special session is going to bring in the bill to make what you call constitutional amendments. And simultaneously, the ex-president's committee report will come. So, they will all have early elections. So, that's, that's the immediate deduction.
Moving on, the next fourth point is puncture India. So, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, puncture India as in I dot N dot D dot I dot A, right? India, the opposition alliance. So, what, why would Modi want early elections if at all? That is because there, there's a grouping that's coming into, is forming. And well, it's taking a time, but they seem like they are thinking of a much more solid alliance than just saying that, okay, we are with you, we will not fight against you. This alliance, they are trying to actually see which party is the primary part of a state and everybody then supports that party by withdrawing their candidates, right? So, that's, that's a much stronger alliance than, let's say, the last few elections we have had under the overall umbrella alliances. This time, the India alliance is to be a little more serious about supporting people, like, let's say, backing Mamta all the way in Bengal. We're trying candidate so that it will be Mamta versus BJP in Bengal. And that result, we know what happened. Similarly, if that is done in Pinnadu, for example, if everybody, all other opposition parties withdraw and it becomes BJP versus the, or DMK, you know already what, what has happened, right? So, I think that alliance before it takes final full shape, because there are many contradictions, it's not easy for that alliance to come at this arrangement, electoral, electoral arrangement. So, I think what, why Modi would want early elections is before this conglomeration can come together and really form a solid alliance, which could, which could actually undermine the BJP in various states, spread in the north. That is one reason why he would want to announce early elections so that these people are not prepared enough. They don't have enough time to come, or kind of, what do you call, hammer out all details and prepare and have enough time to campaign. Because Modi never in the campaign mode, right? He is never off campaign at any time. But the others come in to play only three months, two months before elections. So, I think he just wants to cut that time short for the opposition. So, that could be one reason why we have all assumed that he wants to call early elections.
Right. Alright, sir. So, next to your point is positive mood. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, the positive mood, generally, we have been through a successful launch of Chandrayaan, then G20, the economy is on the upswing. Generally, there's good news and I think people generally are feeling, even globally, all, all global leaders as well as global newspapers, global media has started talking about India in positive terms after a long time. They all see India as one of the hopes in terms of the growth in economy for the next few years or maybe even decades, right? And that positive mood, of course, there are, there are the riders like inflation and unemployment and others are weak, weak links in that picture. But overall, the mood of the nation is pretty, pretty upbeat. So, that could be one reason why people are saying, okay, this is the time Modi will, because the longer he waits for the elections, something else might happen and this mood might change. And by its time, if the opposition alliance takes root, then he'll have a trouble, he'll have more trouble. I think that is one reason why people are saying that he might go in for early election. And obviously, the parallel is done with Atal Bihari Wajpai's calling of early election that 2004, under, under the slogan of India shining. That, that's very, very close to what's happening right now. But the, the key difference is that Modi is not given being overconfident when elections are around the corner, right? He likes to nail every kind of, he likes to dive every nail into the coffin of the opposition before he takes them on. So, so that, that's one thing. So, the, the whole assumption of why he would call early elections is based on the positive mood. Generally, people in the country are feeling upbeat about things. I think that's why I've put the positive mood of the nation. Also, if you, if you've been looking at the recent reports, he is also still the most global leader by, by a huge margin, right? Seventy-six percent approval for his global leadership in India. So, that's, that's big, big lead. And that's why it might sound, it might seem like he would want election earlier than later.
Right. Alright, sir. So, you've also mentioned fear of food inflation. What is fear of inflation you have, inflation that you have listed?
Yeah. So, whole of August, I think, we've been through this, the tomato price crisis. Tomatoes went in most parts of India, especially in the north, to 260 rupees cage and all that, right? And wheat prices have gone up, rice prices have gone up, edible oil prices have gone up. Generally, everything is on the upswing in terms of prices. The inflation, food, food inflation is what is actually driving our overall inflation to more than the mandated. Six percent is the upper limit of RBI's mattered inflation. We are way above that. Maybe now we are coming, it's coming under a bit of control. That control has been exercised because of various reasons, which, which I'll come to later. So, the general consensus would be that before inflation picture kind of gets worse, he would want elections. So, there's a good time to hold elections. So, that's, that's why, that's one of the reasons, inflation. Everybody thinks that before things go very bad, he might, he might want to get the elections win.
Right. Okay. Alright, so BJP's Modi Bhramastha is next on your list. So, can you explain that?
Yeah, see, BJP is an upbeat principe because there's a, there's a person like Prime Minister Narendra Modi who's leading the party. He is way bigger than the right now, right? So, if BJP, if the election, if Modi were supposed to, were to lead the BJP in election, were to name, he will lead the BJP in, in the election. And if this is supposed to be one, one nation, one poll, which is what is our assumption mostly, that he might actually go in for early elections coinciding with the state elections, then what happens is when you have state election, state assembly election separately on, on the phone without, without coinciding with the parliamentary election, the issues are completely different, right? Then the Modi impact on, on, on our state elections is not as high or as prominent as we have seen in the looks of elections. Recent examples are Himachal Pradesh and a bigger example is Karnataka, right? So, the Modi's, the overhanging image and perception of Modi is kind of undermined by lack of state leaders, the state issues taking the days and all that. But if more, if elections are held to the, in, in states and nations, Modi is such a marvelous campaigner that he will deliberately set the agenda for a national poll rather than the for a state poll. So, all the issues of the states will get subsumed into this action into the one nation, one poll election, giving Modi and the BJP the upper hand. And Modi being such an electoral gladiator, when, when he gets into election, it's, 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 he's all over there, right? Every day, he doesn't tire. He's doing government functions half a day and then he's getting into public meetings right of the day. So, the moment he enters the, the electoral fray as a prime minister and as somebody who's so big in terms of the importance of the election, all cameras, everything, twenty percent will be on him. There will be very little space for state issues and there will be very little space for opposition in, in, in that, in that kind of a narrative, which is a one nation, one poll narrative. So, Modi is such a gladiator, that is why people assume that he will bring the elections forward, he will take it along with the elections to Madhya Pradesh, Rajasthan, Telangana, I think Meghai and Chittisgarh. In at least four of these states, the BJP is not looking good right now. So, if Modi advances the election and he takes over the election hearing, then all the weaknesses in these four states might actually be washed away. This is why people are assuming that he will go in for early elections.
Alright. Okay, so those are the seven reasons why Modi might consider early elections. So, now let's look on to the reasons why he might not come. So, so first on that list, Venkatesh sir, is a risky game. So, can you tell us, what is the risk?
Yeah. Conducting a, elections to five states and areas will need a constitutional amendment, right? It's one, there might be more constitution, more, more than one constitutional amendments to make. Then the, it, it might all need what they call affirmation, the state assemblies. Unless, unless the state assemblies also kind of supported, it might not be, it might not be possible to kind of dissolve their assemblies and then go for one election. So, the more important is that in the Rajasaba, the current strength of the BJP does not indicate that they will have a smooth sailing. And Modi is not known to take risks that he knows he has, he doesn't have enough, what do you call, he doesn't have a winning. So, I don't think he will take the constitutional amendment route at all and at least not in this session. If he had, if he had to do that, he would have definitely tried in the, the, the session that just went by. It was not even what, maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago, it ended. So, I don't think this special session has anything to do with the one nation, one poll bill that everybody assumes he will bring. My, my assessment is no. This is not what this special session is about.
Okay. Right. Alright, sir. So, the next on your list is Kovind, the red herring. So, can you explain that?
Yes. So, Modi, Modi loves to keep you off guard, keep you off track, keep you guessing what he, what he wants to do. So, he announced the special session. Then people, all of us immediately kind of started talking about early elections. So, to kind of further give more, more, what do you call, grace to the rumors, he, he brought in this Kovind committee. It's very clear that he wanted everybody to think, yes, this is it. This is it. This parliament session will come up with a special constitutional amendment on one nation, one poll. But does it seem likely? He set it up, he set up the committee about ten days ago now, right? And tomorrow, by tomorrow, that committee has to give its recommendations. Does it look like it's going to happen? So, I think it was just a red herring. He, he enjoys people having kind of a rumor festival in the country. So, and then he'll end up doing some completely, something completely different. So, I think it was a deliberate, very deliberate attempt to throw us off our tracks and to, for us to believe that, yeah, we got him, we understood, this is what he's doing. I think we have understood what he's doing yet.
Alright. Okay. So, so why do you call this a fire ritual? So, another thing I can do this.
Yeah, this is, yeah, if you have lived as long as I have lived, I think you've, you would have by now known that every election, just about one, one year before the parliamentary elections, these rumors kind of keep, they raise their head and they stay there for, for a few months and maybe about four or five months or maybe even three before the election, then everybody gives up and says, okay, now they'll be on shed. This happened in 2019 also. Everybody was so, so, so certain that Modi is going to go for an early election. He didn't, right? And as I said, it, he's, he's different from the BJP of Wajpayee time. They were, they were extremely certain that they were going to, they were going to sweep India because they thought India was shining and then Congress came out of nowhere. So, Modi is not given to electoral overconfidence. He likes to fix everything to the last detail. So, the one thing that he will not show is that, okay, I know I'm going to win this, so I'll, I'll, I'll bring this election forward. I don't think he'll do that. So, that's, that's the reason why I said it's a five-year ritual and we shouldn't put too much, what do you call, we must not give too much importance to this.
Right. Okay. So, sir, number four on your list is once bitten. So, who and what are you referring to?
Yeah, there, once bitten, I've already referred to one reason, which is the 2004 election, which BJP lost. They, they thought they were going to win hands down and Congress won it hands down. From nowhere, it came up and took up some 208 seats or something, which is the biggest victory for Congress after a long, long time, right? It does not, it's not reached that. In fact, it has dropped to forty-four and fifty-four in the last two elections, right? So, that is one reason why I said once bitten. More important is that Modi knows that the, the, the job of calling for an early election is only fifty percent in the hands of governments. Fifty percent or more, it's in the hands of the election commission. And nobody knows this better than Modi because he did this in 2002 as Gujarat, Gujarat Chief Minister. Wanted just after, less than six months after the Gujarat riots of 2000, early 2022, he wanted elections in about July. I think he, I think I met, he, a month here and there. I think in July or August, he called for elections, whereas they were only due in 23 February. The then election, Chief Election Commissioner, Linkdo, J M Linkdo, he put his foot down saying that, no, the state is in no shape. The, the riots have just happened, people are still displaced. The rehabilitation work is very tardy. He said, we will not hold elections till things normalize. And finally, I think the elections were held in Gujarat only in the month of December of 2022. That, that cycle is still kind of continuing to this day.
Yeah, sir. So, your last point is innocuous agenda. So, can you, innocuous agenda, the government has set for the special session. So, can you elaborate more on that please?
Yeah. So, this, this is the, the last item on my list. But I'm sure it actually is so overpowering that this is, this can be the only reason, the only reason why Modi will not go in for early elections. Why I say that is he just does not, just does not do what we kind of summarize, what we analyze and what we kind of build on and say, okay, this, one, two, three, four, five is done. So, this is where, this is, this is where he is heading and this is what he will do. He will do all that to keep the public guessing, the rumor mills going. I think there's a certain amount of personal thrill he gets out of it. And then he comes up with something completely different. So, I think that is what is going to happen. And this, the, the one other thing he did is, say, maybe last, last week, is to release the agenda of that, of the, of this special session starting from tomorrow. What is on the agenda? On the agenda is kind of paying tributes to the great service done by the, the old parliament building, right? Singing pains to how well it served in democracy, blah, blah, blah. And discussing four or five pending bills. If we really needed to discuss four or five pending bills, they could have extended the last session. So, it did not need a special session. You do not call a special session to extend, to, sorry, discuss pending bills. I, I, I don't, I, it doesn't kind of, it's not even logical, right? So, especially when the last session ended maybe just three weeks before this. So, I don't think, that's why I call this a innocuous agenda. This is, this agenda kept innocuous deliberately. So, that we think, okay, acha, this is it, there's nothing. You, you, you first build it up to a big thing about one nation, one poll and then he's going to this, he's going to do that, blah, 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 blah. Suddenly, you introduce an agenda which is nothing, which is a nothing agenda. So, then why call a special center? So, that is why I think this, this gives us clarity that, as I said, it's not going to be one nation, one poll. That's very clear. They, they don't have time, it's a much, much, what do you call, complicated. It's a very intricate issue. It cannot be done in the space of five days, right? So, that is not on. And, and discussing, maybe they'll discuss those four or five pending bills in the first two days, but there are, there are, it's a five-day session. So, obviously, there's something else coming up. So, it, it's, it, this is just one other red herring, another shimmra that is thrown at us and it's up to us what we make out of it.
Right. So, what is this session about then, sir?
Yeah. Yeah. So, that, that, that question, wow, which is what I, I think we have been trying to analyze for the last few minutes. One thing I can say for certain is that he will bring up some law, looks like he will bring up some law, which the opposition might find tough to stand in the way of. Let's say, the women's reservation will, it's been kind of pending for what now, decades now. Especially some North Indian parties, they are opposed to it. BJP has been for it, Congress has been for it. Most of the paper, most of the parties say, we are for it, we are for it. But nothing actually has got done in the last thirty years in terms of actually making thirty-three percent reservation for women in assemblies and state, in parliament seats, right? So, Modi has over the last nine years cultivated women as one of his core constituencies, right? They go out in numbers. They are the ones who have pulled off election after election for him in most places. All, all the, wherever he's won elections in the last nine years, I think there's a big chunk of woman voters that is taken away from the rest of the parties. So, I think if, if you put these two together, he might want to do something very big for women voters. But as I said, most often, all of us can be with Modi, one plus one, we can make it eleven. But he might have some other arithmetic in his mind completely. Then the other thing that he might bring up is caste is a big, big thing in every Indian election. And this time in Bihar, which is, which is going to be a very critical state for him in 2024, Bihar, they've already started a caste census, right? So, the, if, if, so the caste politics will be, will hit a peak. I think he might want to kind of steal the thunder from the opposition parties by being in or talking something about the Rukmini, J Rukmini Committee on, Commission on Categorization of OBCs. For, for long, the, under the twenty-seven percent OBC reservation, it's been seen that the, the more dominant castes within the backward caste have walked away with all benefits of reservation in the last thirty years. So, this commission was formed to figure out, to reclassify, to see what are the categorizations, who's, who's got more benefit, who's, who's got less benefit and how to kind of equalize all this backwards or backwards. Why have classifications in backwards? So, that's one of the things. So, we don't know what the report says. It has been submitted to the president on July 1st. Obviously, the government must have seen the recommendations, they are aware of it. Here, if he might want to do something big, if he does this, this is a pan-India thing, okay? And it will be about castes. So, if, that could be one of the things that he is coming up with. But as I said, you can only kind of preempt Modi on so many things or guess, guess him out correctly very, very few times. So, let's see what is, what is coming up with.
For a special session of parliament, rumor mills have been working overtime. What is he up to? Is he going to just move to the new parliament building? Or just discuss a few pending bills? Or is he going to bring in the one nation, one poll bill? Special session less than two days away, the most asked question is, is he going to advance lower polls? Modi loves to keep all his cuts close to his chest. But there are hints from his public life that can help us figure out what he might do and what he might not. Today, our editor, Mr. B V Rao, has made a list of seven reasons why he thinks he will call early elections and five reasons why he will not. So, I'll first list out the reasons why Modi might call early elections. So, reasons for early polls are special session, one nation, one poll committee, one plus two equals three, puncture India, positive mood, fear of food inflation, BJP's Modi Bhramastha. puncture India, positive mood, fear of food inflation, BJP's Modi Bhamastra. And here is a list of reasons why he won't call early elections. Risky and tedious, COVID committee, a fire ritual, once bitten, innocuous agenda. So now let me invite Mr. B V Rao to explain these reasons in detail. Hello, Venkatesh sir.
Hi, Indra.
Alright, sir. So let's go through the list one item at a time. So the first, the special section, what does it tell us?
Yeah, I think that's in the name, special session, right? So everybody is expecting something very, very special. So the first thing that comes to everybody's mind when some, we are talking about something special is that is it going to be early elections? Because it is that time of the year, right? We are just a few months away from the election. So the obvious rumor or obvious deduction is that Modi is planning something very big in, in, in terms of early, early elections, right? That's, that's why I think the moment he called the special session, everybody started talking about early elections.
Right. Alright, sir. So, uh, your second reason says O N O P, which is one nation, one poll.
Yeah. So I think, I think this is just a red herring. What one nation, one poll, uh, soon after the special session was announced, he came up with the announcement of one nation, one poll committee under former president Kovind. This basically I think was intended to actually show the rumors about an early election. But I doubt, uh, uh, that it is that. But yeah, uh, like I said, I think it is just the fact that he announced a special session and then simultaneously called a former president to, uh, give suggestions on one election, one, uh, version, one election. Everybody has kind of put two and two and in, in, in many ways, two and two can be twenty-two, right? So I think that's where we are. That's why the, uh, one nation, one poll a- announcement has happened.
Okay. So your third reason, uh, one plus two equals three. So what do you mean?
Yeah, as I said, it was already said, plus two is three as a, uh, uh, special session. Then read it, uh, read that together with the committee formed by, uh, the, under, uh, COVID's, uh, leadership. And you tend to immediately think that, okay, special session is going to bring in the bill to, uh, yeah, uh, make what you call constitutional amendments. And simultaneously, the ex-president's committee report will come. So they will all have early elections. So that's, that's the immediate deduction.
Moving on, the next, uh, fourth point is puncture India. So can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, puncture India as in I dot N dot D dot I dot A, right? India, the opposition alliance. So what, why would Modi want early elections, if at all? That is because the, the, there's a grouping that coming, uh, into, into, or is, is forming. And, uh, well, it's taking its time, but that, this seem like they are thinking of a much more solid alliance than just saying that, okay, we are with you, we will fight against you. This alliance, they are trying to actually see which party is the primary party in a particular state. And everybody then supports that party by withdrawing their candidates, right? So that's, that's a much stronger alliance than, uh, let's say the, uh, last few elections we have had and, uh, uh, the overall umbrella alliances. This time the India alliance seems to be a little more serious about supporting people, like, let's say, uh, backing Mamta all the way in West Bengal, withdrawing candidates so that it will be Mamta versus BJP in God. And that result, we know what happened. Similarly, if, if that's done in, uh, Tamil Nadu, for example. If everybody, all other opposition parties withdraw and it becomes BJP versus, uh, the rest or D M K, you know already what, what has happened, right? So I think that alliance before it takes final full shape, because there are many contradictions. It's not easy for that alliance to come at this, uh, arrangement, electoral, electoral arrangement. So I think what, why Modi would want early, early elections? It is before this conglomeration can come together and really form a solid alliance which could, uh, which could actually undermine the BJP in various states, especially in the north. That is one reason why he would want to, uh, uh, announce early elections so that these people are not prepared enough. They don't have enough time to cut, uh, kind of, uh, what do you call, hammer out all details and prepare, have enough time to campaign because Modi forever is in campaign mode, right? He is never off campaign at any time. But the others come into play only three months, two months before elections. So I think he just wants to cut that time short for the opposition. So that could be one reason why we have all assumed that he wants to call the elections.
Right. Alright, sir. So next to your point is positive mood. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah. So positive mood, uh, uh, gen- generally we have been through, uh, a successful launch of Chandrayaan. Uh, then G twenty, uh, the economy is on the upswing. Generally, there's good news and I think people generally are feeling, uh, uh, even, even globally, all, all, uh, global leaders as well as global newspapers, global media has started talking about India in positive terms after a long time. They all see India as one of the hopes in terms of the, uh, growth in economy for the next, uh, few years or maybe even decades, right? And that positive mood, of course, there are, there are the riders like, uh, inflation and unemployment and others are weak, uh, weak links in that picture. But overall, the mood of the nation is pretty, pretty, uh, upbeat. So that could be one reason why people are saying, okay, this is the time Modi will go because the longer he waits for the elections, something else might happen and this mood might change. And by which time if the opposition alliance takes, uh, root, then he'll have a trouble, he'll have more trouble. I think that is one reason why people say that he might go in for early election. And obviously the parallel drawn with, uh, Atal Bihari Wajpai's, uh, uh, calling of early elections that in two thousand, uh, four, uh, the, under the slogan of India shining. That, that's very, very, uh, close what's happening right now. But the, the key difference is that Modi is not given to being overconfident when elections are around the corner, right? He, he likes to nail every kind of, he, and likes to, uh, likes to drive every nail into the coffin of the opposition before he takes the mark. So, uh, so that, that, that's one thing. So the, the whole, uh, assumption of why he would call early elections is based on the positive mood. Generally, people in the country are feeling a bit of things. I think that's why I've put, uh, the positive, uh, mood of the nation. Also, if you, if you're, uh, been, uh, looking at recent, uh, reports, he is also still the most preferred global leader by, by a huge margin, right? Seventy-six percent approval for his global leader in India. So that's, that's a big, uh, big lead. And that's why it might found, it might seem like he would want election earlier than later.
Right. Alright, sir. So you've also mentioned fear of food inflation. What is this fear of inflation that you have mentioned?
Yeah. So whole of August, uh, I think, uh, we've been, uh, the tomato price crisis. Tomatoes went in most parts of, for, uh, India, especially in the north, to two hundred and sixty rupees per kg and all that, right? And right, uh, wheat prices have gone up, rice prices, rice price, edible oil prices have gone up. Generally, everything is on the upping in terms of, uh, uh, prices. The inflation, food, food inflation is what is actually driving our overall inflation to, uh, more than, uh, the mandated. Six percent is the upper limit of RBI's mandated, uh, inflation. There were all that. Maybe just now we are coming, it's coming under a bit of control. That control has been exercised because of various, uh, reasons, uh, which, which I'll, uh, come to later. So the general, uh, consensus would be that before the inflation, uh, picture kind of gets, uh, uh, worse, he would want elections. So this is a good time to hold elections. So that's, that's why, that's one of the reasons, inflation. Everybody thinks that before things go very bad, he would, he might want to get, uh, the elections going.
Right. Okay. Alright. So BJP's Modi Bhamastra is next on your list. So can you explain that?
Yeah, see, uh, BJP is on upbeat, uh, principally because there's a, uh, there's a, uh, person like Prime Minister Modi who's leading the party. He is, uh, way bigger than the BJP right now, right? So if BJP, if more, the election, if Modi were supposed to, were to lead the, uh, BJP in election, were to, he will lead the BJP in, in the election. And if this is supposed to be one, one nation, one poll, which is what is our, uh, assumption mostly, that he might actually go in for early elections coinciding with the state elections. Then what happens is when you have state election, state assembly election separately on, on the road without, uh, uh, without coinciding with the parliamentary election, the issues are completely different, right? Then the Modi impact on, on, on our state elections is not as high or as prominent as we have seen in the Lok Sabha elections. The recent examples are, uh, uh, Himachal Pradesh and a bigger example is, uh, is Karnataka, right? So the, the Modi's, uh, the overhanging image and perception of Modi is kind of undermined by lack of, uh, uh, state leaders, the state issues taking precedence and all that. But if more, if elections are held together in, in eight nations, Modi is such a marvelous campaigner, he will deliberately set the agenda for a national poll rather than the first state poll. So all the issues of the states will get subsumed into this election, uh, into the, uh, one nation, one poll election, giving the BJP the upper hand. And Modi being such an electoral idiot, when, when, when he gets into election, it's, 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 he's all over there, right? Every day, he doesn't tire. He, he, he's doing government functions, uh, half a day and then he's getting into uh, public meetings the rest of the day. So the, the moment he enters, uh, the, the electoral fray as a prime minister and as somebody who is so big in terms of the importance of the election, all cameras, everything, twenty-four seven will be on him. There will be very little space for state issues and there will be very little space for opposition in, in, in that, in that kind of a narrative, whi- which is a one nation, one poll narrative. So Modi is such a gladiator. That is why people assume that he will bring the elections forward. He will take it along with the, uh, elections to, uh, Madhya Pradesh, Rajasthan, Telangana. Uh, I think Meghalay and, uh, Chhetisgarh. In at least four of these states, the BJP is not looking good right now. So if Modi advances the election and he takes over the election hearing, then all the weaknesses in these four states might actually be washed away. That is why people are assumed that he will go in for, uh, early elections.
Okay. So those are the seven reasons, uh, why Modi might consider early elections. So now let's look on to the reasons why he might not consider. So, so first on that list, Venkatesh sir, is a risky game. So can you tell us what is the risk?
Yeah. Conducting, uh, uh, yeah, elections to five states and others will need a constitutional amendment, right? Not just one. There might be more constitu- more, more than one constitutional amendments to make. Then the, uh, it, it might also need, uh, what I'll, uh, affirmation in the state assemblies. Unless, unless the state assemblies also kind of support it, it might not be, it might not be possible to, uh, kind of dissolve, dissolve their assemblies and then go for one election. So the more important is that in the Rajasaba, the current strength of the BJP does not indicate that they will have a smooth sailing. Modi is not, won't take, uh, risks that he knows he has, he doesn't have enough, uh, what do you call, he doesn't have a chance of winning. So I don't think he will take the constitutional amendment route at all and at least not in this. If he had, if he had to do that, he would have definitely tried in the, 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 that just went by. It was not even what? Maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago, it, uh, ended. So I don't think this special session has anything to do with the one nation, one poll bill that everybody assumes he will bring. My, my assessment, this is not what this special session is about.
Okay. Right. Alright, sir. So the next on your list is, uh, COVID, uh, red herring. So can you explain that?
Yes. So Modi, Modi loves to keep you off guard, uh, keep you off track, uh, keep you guessing what he, what he wants to do. So once the, uh, special session, then people, all, of us immediately, uh, kind of started talking about, uh, early elections. So to kind of further, uh, give, uh, uh, more, more, uh, what do you call, uh, grace to the rumors, he, he brought this, uh, COVID committee. It's very clear that he wanted everybody to think, yes, this is it. This is it. This parliament session will come up with, uh, uh, special constitutional amendment on one nation, one poll. But does it seem likely? He set it up, uh, he set up the committee about ten days ago now, right? And tomorrow, by tomorrow, that committee has to give its, uh, recommendations. Does it look like it's going to happen? So I think it was just a red herring. He, he enjoys people having, uh, uh, kind of a rumor festival in the country. So, and then he'll end up doing some completely, something completely different. So I think it was a des- deliberate, very deliberate attempt to throw us off our tracks and to, for us to believe that, yeah, we got him, we understood, this is what he is doing. I don't think we have understood what he is doing yet.
Alright. Okay. So, so why do you call this a fire ritual? So, other thing I can remember.
This is, yeah, if, if you have lived as long as I have lived, I think you'll, uh, you would have by now known that every election just about one, one year before the, uh, parliamentary elections, these rumors, uh, kind of keep, uh, they raise their head and they stay there for a, for a few months. Maybe about, uh, four or five months or maybe even three months before the election. Then everybody gives up and says, okay, now they'll be on schedule. This happened in two thousand nineteen also. Everybody was so, so, so certain that Modi is going to go for an early election. He didn't, right? And as I said, it, he's, he's different from the, uh, BJP of much by time. They were, they were extremely certain that they were going to, they were going to sweep India because they thought India was shining. And then Congress thought of, oh, yeah. So Modi is not given to electoral overconfidence. He likes to fix everything to the last detail. So the one thing that he will not show is that, okay, I know I'm going to win this. So I'll, I'll, I'll bring this election forward. I don't think he'll do that. So that's, that's the reason why I said it's a five-year ritual and we shouldn't put, uh, uh, too much, uh, what do you call? We, we, we must not give too much importance to this.
Right. Okay. So, so number four on your list is once bitten. So who and what are you referring to?
Yeah, there, once bitten, I've already referred to one reason, which is the, uh, two thousand four, uh, action, which BJP lost. They, they thought they were going to win hands down and Congress won it hands down. From nowhere it came up and took up some two hundred and eight seats or something, which is the biggest victory for Congress after a long, long time, right? And it does not, uh, it, it's not reached that. In fact, it's dropped to forty-four and fifty-four in the, uh, last two elections, right? So that is one, uh, reason why I said once bitten. More important is that Modi knows that the, the, the job of calling for an early election is only fifty percent in hands of governments. Fifty percent or more, it's in the hands of the election cushion. And nobody knows this better than Modi because he did this in two thousand two as Gujarat, Gujarat chief minister. He wanted just after, just six months after the Gujarat riots of two thousand, uh, uh, early two thousand twenty-two. He wanted elections in about July. I think he, I think, uh, I met, uh, uh, off by a month here and there. I think in July or August he called for elections. Whereas they were only due in twenty-three February. They, the then, uh, election, uh, chief election commissioner Linggo, J M Linggo. He put his foot down saying that no, the state is in no shape. The, the riots have just happened. People are still displaced. They're having. The rehabil-, rehabilitation work is very, very tardy. He said, we will not hold elections till things formalize. And finally, I think the elections were held in Gujarat only in the month of December of two thousand twenty two. And thus, that cycle is still kind of continuing to this day.
Yes, so your last point is innocuous agenda. So can you, the innocuous under the comment has said for the special session, so can you elaborate more on that please?
Yeah, so this, this is the, the last item on my list. But I'm sure it actually is so overpowering that this is, this can be the only reason. The only reason why Modi will not go for early elections. What I say that is he just does not, just does not do what we kind of summarize, what we analyze. And what we kind of build on and say, okay, this one, two, three, four, five reasons, so this is, this is where he is heading and this is what he will do. He will do all that to keep the public guessing, the rumor mills going. I think there is a certain amount of personal thrill he gets out of it. And then he comes up with something completely different. So I think that is what is going to happen and this. The, the one other thing he did is, say maybe last, last week. Is to release the agenda of that, of the, of this special session starting from tomorrow. What is on the agenda? On the agenda is kind of paying tributes to the great service done by the, the old parliament building, right? Singing pains to how well it served Indian democracy, blah, blah, blah. And discussing four or five pending bills. If we really needed to discuss four or five pending bills, they could have extended the last session. So it did not need a special session. You do not call a special session to extend, to sorry, discuss pending bills. I, 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 I don't, I, it does kind of, it's not even logical, right? So especially when the last session ended maybe just three weeks before this. So I don't think, that's why I call this an innocuous agenda. This is, this agenda has been kept innocuous deliberately. So that we think, oh, this is it, there's nothing. You, you, you first build it up to a big, about one nation, one poll and then he's going to this, he's going to do that, blah, 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 blah. Suddenly you introduce an agenda which is nothing, which is a nothing agenda, right? So then why call a special session? So that is what I think, this, this gives us clarity. That as I said, it's not going to be one nation, one poll, that's very clear. They, they don't have the time, it's a much, much, what do you call, complicated, it's a very intricate issue. It cannot be done in the space of five days, right? So that is not on and, and discussing, maybe they'll discuss those four or five pending bills in the first two days. But there are, there are, it's a five-day special session. Obviously, there's something else coming up. So it, it's, this is just a, one other red herring, another shymra that he's thrown at us. And it's up to us what we make out of it.
Right, so what is this session about then sir?
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's a question, which is what I, I, I think we have been trying to analyze for the last few minutes. One thing I can say for certain is that he will bring up some law, looks like he will bring up some. Which the opposition might find tough to stand in the way of. Let's say the women's reservation will, it's been kind of pending for what now decades. Especially some North Indian parties, they are opposed to it. BJP has been for it, Congress has been for it, most of the paper, most of the parties say we are for it, we are for it. But nothing actually has got done in the last thirty years in terms of actually making thirty-three percent reservation for women in assemblies and in parliament. Seats, right? So Modi has over the last nine years cultivated women as one of his core constituencies. Right, they go out in numbers, they are the ones who have pulled off election after election for him in most places. All, all the, whoever has won elections in the last nine years, I think there's a big chunk of women voters that is taken away from the rest of the parties. So I think if, if you put these two together, he might want to do something very big for women voters. But as most often, all of us can be, Modi, one plus one, we can make it eleven. But he might have some other arithmetic in his mind completely. Then the other thing that he might bring up his caste is a big, big thing in every Indian election. At this time in Bihar, which is, which is a very critical state for him in two thousand twenty four. Bihar have already started a caste census, right? So the, if, if the, so the caste politics will be, will hit a peak. I think he might want to kind of spit thunder from opposition parties. By bringing in or talking something about the Rukmini, Jay Rukmini Committee. On, Commission on Categorization of O B Cs. See for lo-, for long, under the twenty-seven percent O B C reservation. It's been seen that the, the more dominant castes within the backward caste have walked away with all the benefits of reservation in the last thirty years. So this commission was formed to figure out, to reclassify, to see what categorizations, who's, who's got more benefit, who's, who's got less benefit. How to kind of equalize all these backwards are backwards, why are classifications in backwards? So that's one of the thinkings. So we don't know what the report says, it has been submitted to the president on July first. Obviously, the government's seen the recommendations, they are aware of it. Here if him want to do something, if he does this, this is a pan-India thing, right? And it will be broadcast. If, that could be one of the things that he is coming up with. But as I said, you can only kind of pre-Modi on so many things or guess, guess him out correctly very, very few times. So let's see what is, what is coming up with.
For a special session of parliament, the rumor mills have been working overtime. What is he up to? Is he going to just move to the parliament building or just discuss a few pending bills? Or is he going to bring in the one nation, one poll bill? With the special session less than two days away, the most asked question is, is he going to advance Lok Sabha polls? Modi loves to keep all his cards close to his chest, but there are hints from his public life that he can figure out what he might do and what he might not. Today, editor Mr. B V Rao has made a list of seven reasons why he thinks Modi will call elections and five reasons why he will not. So I'll first list out the reasons why Modi might call early elections. So reasons for early polls are second. One Nation, One Poll Committee, one plus two equals. Puncture India, Positive Mood, Fear of Food Inflation, BJP's Modi Brahmastha. And here is the list of reasons why he won't call early elections. Risky and tedious, Govind Committee, a five-year ritual, once bitten, innocuous agenda. So now let me invite Mr. B V Rao to explain these reasons in detail. Hello Venkatesh.
Hi, Mantra.
Alright sir, so let's go through the list one item at a time. So the first, the special session, what does it tell us?
Yeah, I think it's in the name, special session, right? So everybody is expecting something very big, very special. So the first thing that comes to everybody's mind when some, we are talking about something special is that, is it going to be early elections? Because it is that time of year, we are just a few months away from the election. So the obvious rumor or obvious deduction is that Modi is planning something very big in, in, in terms of earlier, early elections, right? That's, that's why I think the moment he called the special session, everybody started talking about early elections.
Right, alright sir, so your second reasons is O N O E, which is one nation, one poll election.
Yeah, so I think, I think this is just a red herring. What, one nation, one poll, soon after the special session was announced, he came with. The announcement of one nation, one poll committee under former president COVID. This basically I think was intended to actually fuel the rumors about an early election. But I doubt whether it is that, but yeah, like I said, I think it is just. Fact that he announced a special session and then simultaneously called a former president to give suggestions on one election, one, one nation, one election. Everybody has kind of put two and two and in, in, in many ways, two and two can be twenty-two, right? So I think that's, yeah, that's why the one nation, one poll announcement happened.
Okay, so your third reason, one plus two equals three, so what do you?
Yeah, as I said, that was already said, one plus two is three as in the special session. Then read it, read that together with the committee formed by the, under COVID's leadership. Then you tend to immediately think that, okay, special session is going to bring in the bill to, yeah, make what you call constitutional amendments. And simultaneously, the ex-president's committee report will come, so we will all have early elections. So that's, that's the immediate deduction.
Moving on, the next fourth point is Puncture India, so can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, puncture India as in I dot N dot, dot I dot A, right? India, the opposition allies. What, why would Modi want early elections if at all? That is because there, there's a grouping that's coming into, into, is, is forming. And with, well, it's taking its time, but they're, they seem like they are thinking of a much more solid alliance. And just saying that, okay, we are with you, we will not fight against you. This alliance, they are trying to actually see which party is the primary party in a particular state. And everybody then supports that party by withdrawing their candidates, right? So that's, that's a much stronger alliance than, let's say, the last few elections we have had under the overall umbrella alliances. This time, the India alliance seems to be a little more serious about supporting people, like, like, backing Mamta all the way in West Bengal. Withdrawing candidates, so it will be Mamta versus BJP in Bengal. And that result, we know what happened. Similarly, if, if that is done in Tamil Nadu, for example. If everybody, all other opposition parties withdraw and it becomes BJP versus the rest or D M K, you know already what, what has happened, right? So I think that alliance before it takes final full shape, because there are many contradictions, it's not easy for that alliance to come at this arrangement. Electoral, electoral arrangement. So I think what, why Modi would want early elections is before this conglomeration can come together and really form a solid alliance. Which could, which could actually undermine the BJP in various states, especially in the north. That is one reason why he would want to, uh, uh, those early elections so that these people are not prepared enough. Don't have enough time to come, kind of, what do you call, hammer out all details and prepare and have enough time to campaign. Because Modi forever is in a campaign mode, right? He is never off campaign at any time, but the others come into play only three months, two months before elections. So I think he just wants to cut that time short for the opposition. So that could be one reason why we have all assumed that he wants to call early elections.
Right, alright sir, so next to your point is positive mood. Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, so positive, generally we have been through a successful launch of Chandrane, then G twenty. The economy is on the upswing, generally there's good news and I think people generally are feeling, even, even globally. All, all global leaders as well as global newspapers, global media has started talking about India in positive terms after a long time. They all see India as one of the hopes in terms of the growth in economy for the next few years or maybe even decades, right? And that positive mood, of course, there are, there are the riders like inflation and unemployment and others are weak, weak links in that picture. Overall, the mood of the nation is pretty, pretty upbeat. So that could be one reason why people are saying, okay, this is the time Modi will go because the longer he waits for the elections. Something else might happen and this mood might change. And by which time if the opposition alliance takes root, then he'll have, he'll have more trouble. I think that is one reason why people are saying that he might go in for early election. And obviously, the parallel is drawn with Atal Bihari Wajpai's calling of early elections. That in two thousand four, the, under, under the slogan of India Shine. That, that's very, very close to what's happening right now. But the, the key difference is that Modi is not given to being overconfident when elections are around the corner, right? He likes to nail every kind of, he nails to, likes to drive every nail into the coffin of the opposition before he takes them on. So, so that, that's one thing. So the, the whole assumption of why he would call early elections is based on the positive mood. Generally, people in the country are feeling upbeat about things. I think that's why I put the positive mood of the nation. Also, if you, if you've been looking at the recent reports, he is also still the most preferred global leader by, by a huge margin, right? Seventy-six percent approval for his global leadership in India. So that's, that's a big lead and that's why he might sound, it might seem like he would want election earlier than later.
Right, alright sir, so you've also mentioned fear of food inflation. Is this sort of inflation that you have, inflation that you have listed?
Yeah, so whole of August, I think we've been through this, the tomato price crisis. Tomatoes went in most parts of India, especially in the north, to two hundred and sixty rupees per kg and all that, right? And right, wheat price gone, rice prices, rice prices have gone up, edible oil prices have gone up. Generally, everything was on the upswing in terms of prices. The inflation, food, food inflation is what is actually driving our overall inflation to more than the mandated. Six percent is the upper limit of R B I standard inflation, we are aware of that. Maybe just now coming, it's coming under a bit of control. That control has been exercised because of various reasons, which, which I'll come to later. So the general consensus would be before the inflation picture kind of gets worse. He would want elections, so this is a good time to hold elections. So that's, that's why, that's one of the reasons, inflation. Everybody thinks that before things go very bad, he would, he might want to get the elections going.
Right, okay, right, so BJP's Modi Brahmastha is next on your list, so can you explain that?
Yeah, see BJP is an upbeat. Principally because there's a, there's a person like Prime Minister Narendra Modi who's leading the party. He's way bigger than the BJP right now, right? So if BJP, if the election, if Modi were supposed to, were to lead the BJP in election, were to, he will lead the BJP in the election. And if this is supposed to be one, one nation, one poll, which is what is our assumption mostly. That he might actually go in for early elections coinciding with the state elections. Then what happens is when you have state election, state assembly election separately on their own without, without coinciding with the parliamentary election. The issues are completely different, right? Then the Modi impact on, on, on our state elections is not as high or as prominent as we have seen in the Lok Sabha elections. The recent examples are Himachal Pradesh and a bigger example is Karnataka, right? So the Modi's, the overhang. So the Modi's, uh the overhanging image and perception of Modi is kind of undermined by lack of uh state leaders, the state issues taking precedence and all that. But if more, if elections are held together in, in states and nations, Modi is such a marvelous campaigner that he will deliberately set the agenda for a national poll rather than the for his state's poll. So all the issues of the states will get subsumed into this election, into the one nation, one poll election, giving Modi and the BJP the upper hand. And Modi being such an electoral gladiator, when, when, when he gets into election, it's, 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 he's all over there, right? Every day, he doesn't tire, he, he, he's doing government functions half a day and then he is getting into public meetings the rest of the day. So the, the moment he enters the, the electoral fray as a prime minister and as somebody who is so big in terms of the importance of the election, all cameras, everything, twenty-four-seven will be on him. There will be very little space for state issues and there will be very little space for opposition in, in, in that, in that end of a narrative, which is a one nation, one poll narrative. So Modi is such a gladiator, that is why people assume that he will bring the elections forward, he will take it along with the elections to Madhya Pradesh, Rajasthan, Telangana, uh I think Mehta and Chittis. In at least four of these states, the BJP is not looking good right now. So if Modi advances the election and he takes over the election hearing, then all the weaknesses in these four states might actually be walked away. That is why people are assuming that he will go in for uh elections.
Alright. Okay, so those are the seven reasons uh why Modi might consider early elections. So now let's look on to the reasons why he might not consider. So, so first on that list, Venkatesh, a risky game. So can you tell us, what is the risk?
Yeah, conducting uh yeah, elections to five states and areas will need a constitutional amendment, right? Not just one, there might be more constitution, more, more than one constitutional amendments to make. Then the, uh it, it might also need, uh what do you call, affirmation in the state assemblies. Unless, unless the state assemblies also kind of support it, it might not be, it might not be possible to uh kind of dissolve their assemblies and then go for one election. So the more important in the Rajasaba, the current strength of the BJP does not indicate that they will have a smooth sailing. And Modi is not known to take risks that he knows he has, he doesn't have enough, uh what do you call, like, he doesn't have a chance of winning. So I don't think he will take the constitutional amendment route at all and at least not in this. If he had, if he had to do that, he would have definitely tried in the, the, the session that just went by. It was not even what, maybe two weeks ago, three weeks ago, it ended. So I don't think this special session has anything to do with the one nation, one that everybody assumes he will bring. My, my assessment is no, this is not what this special session is about.
Okay. Right. Alright, sir. So the next one on your list is Govind, the red herring. So can you explain that?
Yes. So Modi, Modi loves to keep you off-guard, uh keep you off-track, uh keep you guessing what he wants to do. So he announced the special session, then people, all, all of us immediately uh kind of started talking about uh early elections. So to kind of further give uh more, more, what do you call, grace to the rumors, he, he, he brought in this uh Govind committee. It's very clear that he wanted everybody to think, yes, this is it, this is it. This parliament session will come up with a, a special constitutional amendment on one nation, one poll. But does it seem likely? He set it up, uh he set up the committee about ten days ago now, right? And tomorrow, by tomorrow, that committee has to give it uh recommendations. Does it look like it's going to happen? So I think it was just a red herring. He, he enjoys people having the, uh kind of a festival in the country. So and then he'll end up doing some completely, something completely different. I think it's a deliberate, very deliberate attempt to throw us off our tracks and to, for us to believe that, yeah, we got him, we understood, this is what he is doing. I don't think we have understood what you mean.
Alright. Okay. So, so why do you call this a five-year ritual? So another.
Yeah, if, if you have lived, as long as I have lived, I think you've, uh you would have by now known that every election, just about one, one year before the uh parliamentary elections, these rumors uh kind of keep, they raise their hat, they stay there for a, for a few months and maybe about four or five months or maybe even three months before the election, then everybody gives up and says, okay, now they'll be on schedule. This happened in two thousand nineteen also, everybody was so, so, so certain that he is going to go for an early election. He didn't, right? As I said, he's, he's different from the uh BJP of Wajpayee time. They were, they were extremely certain that they were going to, they were going to sweep India because they thought India was tiny and then Congress came out of nowhere. So Modi is not going to electoral war conference, he likes to fix everything to the last detail. So the one thing that he will not show is that, okay, I know I'm going to win this, so I'll, I'll, I'll bring this election forward. I don't think he'll, that's, that's the reason why I said it's a five-year ritual and we shouldn't put uh too much, uh what do you call, we, we, we must not give too much importance to this.
Right. Okay. So, so number four on your list is once-bitten. So who and what are you referring to?
Yeah, the once-bitten, I've already referred to one reason, which is the two thousand four election, which BJP lost. They, they thought they were going to win hands down and Congress won it hands down. From nowhere, it came up and took up some two hundred and eight seats or something, which is the biggest victory for Congress after a long, long time, right? And it does not, uh it, it's not reached that, in fact, it dropped to forty-four and fifty-four in the last two elections, right? So that is one uh reason why I said once-bitten. More important is that Modi knows that the, the the job of calling for an early action is only fifty percent in the hands of governments. Fifty percent or more, it's in the hands of the election commission. And nobody knows this better than Modi, because he did this in two thousand two as Gujarat, Gujarat chief minister. He entered just after, less than six months after the Gujarat riots of two thousand, uh early two thousand twenty-two, he wanted elections in about July, I think he, I think I might uh be uh off by a month here and there, I think in July or August, he called for elections, whereas they were only due in twenty-three February. The, the then election, chief election commissioner, Lingdo, J M Lingdo, he put his foot down saying that, no, the state is in no shape, the, the riots have just happened, people are still displaced, the rehabilitation work is very, very, very tardy, yet we will not hold elections till things normalize. Finally, uh I think the elections were held in Gujarat only in the month of December of two thousand twenty-two and thus that cycle is still kind of continuing to this day.
Yeah, sir. So your last point is innocuous agenda. So can you, in our case, agenda, the government had for the special session. So can you elaborate more on that, please?
Yeah. So this, this is the, the last item on my list, but I'm sure it actually is so overpowering that this is, this can be the only reason, the only reason why Modi will not go in for early elections. Why, why I say that is he just does not, just does not do what we kind of summarize, what we analyze and what we kind of build on and say, okay, it's one, two, three, four, five, he has done. So this is where, this is, this is where he is heading and this is what he will do. But he will do all that to keep the public guessing, the rumor mills going. I think there is a certain amount of personal thrill he gets out of it. And then he comes up with something completely different. So I think that is what is going to happen. And this, uh the, the one other uh thing he did is uh, uh say, maybe last, uh last week is to re-release the agenda of that, of the, of this special session starting tomorrow. What is on the agenda? On the agenda is kind of paying tributes to the great service done by the, the old parliament building, right? Uh singing pains to how well it served Indian democracy, blah, blah, blah. And discussing four or five pending bills. If we really needed to discuss four or five pending bills, they could have extended the last session. So it did not need a special session. You do not call a special session to extend, uh to, sorry, uh discuss pending bills. I, 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 I don't, I, it doesn't kind of, it's well logical. So especially when the last session ended maybe just three weeks before this. So I don't think, the, that's why I call this a innocuous agenda. This is, this agenda has been kept innocuous deliberately. So that we think, okay, acha, this is it, there's nothing. You, you, you first build it up to a big thing about one nation, one poll and then he's going to this, he's going to do that, blah, 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 blah. Suddenly, you introduce an agenda which is nothing, which is a nothing agenda, right? So they call a special session. So that is why I think this is clarity that it, as I said, it's not going to be one nation, one poll. That's very clear, they, they don't have the time, it's a much, much, uh what do you call, complicated, it's a very intricate issue. It cannot be done in this, this of five days, right? So that is not on and, and discussing, maybe they'll discuss those uh four or five pending bills in the first two days. But there are, there are, it's a five-day special session. So obviously, there's something else coming up. So it, it's, it, this is just a, one other red herring, another shimmra that is thrown at us. It's up to us what to make out of it.
Right. So what is this session about then, sir?
Yeah, yeah. So that, that, that's a question, uh which is what I, I, I think we have been trying to analyze for the last few minutes. Uh one can say for certain is that he will bring up some law, looks like he will bring up some law, which the opposition might find tough to stand in the way of. Let's say, uh the women's reservation bill, it's been kind of pending for what now, decades now. Uh especially some non-Indian parties, they are opposed to it. BJP has been for it, Congress has been for it, most of the paper, most of the parties say, we are for it, we are for it. But nothing actually has got done in the last thirty years in terms of actually making thirty-three percent reservation for women in assemblies and state, in parliament seat, right? So Modi has over the last nine years cultivated women as one of his core constituencies, right? They go out in numbers, they are the ones who have pulled off election after election in most places. All, all the, wherever he's won elections in the last nine years, I think there's a big uh chunk of woman voters that is taken away from the rest of the parties. So I think if, if you put these two together, he might do something very big for women voters. But as I said, most often, all of us can be, uh with Modi, one plus one, we can make it eleven. Uh but he might have some other arithmetic in his mind completely. Then the other thing that he might bring up is caste is a big, big thing in every Indian election. And this time in Bihar, which is, which is going to be a very critical state for him in two thousand twenty-four. Bihar, they've already started a caste census, right? So the, if, if the, so the caste politics will, will hit a peak. I think he might want to kind of uh steal the thunder from the opposition parties by bringing in or talking something about the Rukmini, J Rukmini yeah, committee on, commission on categorization of OBCs. See, for lo, for long, the under thirty-seven percent OBC reservation, it's been seen that the, the more dominant caste within the backward caste have walked away with all the benefits of reservation in the last thirty years. So this commission was formed to figure out, to reclassify, to see what are the categorizations, who, who's got more benefit, who's, who's got less benefit and how to kind of equalize all these. Backwards are backwards, why have classifications in backwards? So that's one of the thinkings. So we don't know what the report says, it has been submitted to the president on July first. Uh obviously, the government must have seen the recommendations, they are aware of it. Here, if he might want to do something big, if he does this, this is a pan-India thing, right? And it will be about castes. So if, that could be one of the things that he is coming up with. But as I said, you can only kind of uh preempt Modi on some things or guess, guess him out correctly very, very few times. So let's see, what is, what is coming up with?
So, right. So there we go guessing again, but about one thing not guessing is that don't expect anything about early elections in special session. Expect the unexpected, however, uh that's vintage Modi. Alright, uh thank you so much for joining us.
Yeah, you're right. That's vintage Modi, that's vintage Modi, keeps you.
Yes, that's vintage Modi.
Yeah, he keeps you busy kind of analyzing and strategizing and thinking and double thinking and overthinking, guessing and everything. And then finally, he'll have his way.
Right. Alright, sir. Thank you so much for joining us, sir. That was very insightful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, that's all today, folks. If you enjoyed this video, make sure to hit the like button and make sure to subscribe and the bell icon to get notified. This is Madhura and you're watching India Today's post-outs.